Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to call to order. As Chair Vodla is joining us remotely, I will be presiding over today's meeting. I would like to call the August 6, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would staff please call the roll?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelli?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
And? Oh, Commissioner Vodla?
Here.
Right, you have a quorum.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so move.
A second? Are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Okay. Approval of the minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I so move.
A second?
A second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Are there any objections to approving the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes of the PZ Regular Meeting of July 2, 2025 are approved. All right, we're going to move to presentation with prior notice. There are no presentations, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public hearings. Okay, resolution PZ 2025-013, recommending amendment of the Saldana Municipal Code, Section 17.10.215, zoning of annexed areas to provide an interim regulatory process for newly annexed areas without a zoning district designation. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve PZ 2025-013.
Second.
May we have the staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton and Commissioners and Member of the public. So let me just make sure we're sharing it correctly online before I start.
I can see it.
Perfect, thank you for confirming that, Commissioner Anderson. So this resolution is really staff being proactive in what may come or really anticipating future annexation itself. As some of you may be aware, that there's going to be a ballot proposition for the annexation of that 2.63 acres adjacent territory pending votes this fall or in October. With that being said, staff looked at the existing zoning code and under our current code, it gives us a very short timeline as a commission to recommend to council to adopt a zoning district. Therefore, we're amending this section entirely and providing really an interim regulatory process that is realistic, that gives us time to work with the community and do proper analysis. So with that being said, the current code is on the screen. It's, I'm going to go ahead and read it. Current code says, "No later than 30 days after the effective date of an annexation to the city, your commission shall recommend a zoning plan for such annexed lands to the city council. Constructions of any structure or building or the establishment of any land use in the newly annexed areas shall conform to the adopted zoning plan." As you know, we submitted a petition to the local boundary commission and within that plan itself is a transition plan. That transition plan says the first step is we need to update our comprehensive plan and do land use analysis and then do some rezoning. So therefore, that's going to take a lot of time. So what does that look like if it's annexed? What are we going to do? With that being said, staff is proposing the following amendments, and I did work with the city attorney on this, is ultimately what's above is detract changes and what's below in bold is what would be the entire language itself with the changes in bold. Ultimately, if it's annexed or any future annexation, we would give it a holding zoning to like update the map because I wouldn't want to see new boundaries of the Saldana city limits without a zoning because then people might jump to the conclusion, I don't have a zoning designation, maybe I don't have regulations to follow. So automatically, if any area was to be annexed, they would get an annexed transition zone, the label AT. And part of the revision as well is that the commission, without a timeline, because we'll follow what we provided in the petition, is just ultimately recommending a zoning plan to council based on existing and proposed land use and the comprehensive plan. It gives us more flexibility, it doesn't give your commission a very unrealistic timeline and that is what staff's proposing for that section. Then furthermore, I think with any zoning section, it's always nice to elaborate the whys and then the process. So in this case, all of this is new. This whole section of intent, why we're doing it, special definitions, ultimately, it was discussed that what are we going to do in the interim? So if there are minor development in this newly annexed area, staff will then be able to make the determination to approve it at an administrative level. So as long as the surrounding uses is compatible, the impact is low and it's really, you know, only at conditions necessary to protect public health, safety and welfare, it would be approved at staff level. But if, say you were in a residential neighborhood in this newly annexed area and they want to build a big warehouse, that would be something that as a staff, I'd be like, that isn't something that exists in the area. I will punt it to the commission to consideration, to consider and go through the conditional use permit. Other than that, issuance of a permit is similar to our process. Nothing new here, ultimately, it's a two-tier development process. This is pretty much as basic as it gets, these are recommendations from the staff, giving your commission more time as well as staff to guide and go back to how decisions are made. And so staff is recommending that your commission just approve this amendment and forward to city council to adopt before the ballot or the vote in October. And that's all I have, happy to answer any question your commission may have.
Thank you. The public comment period is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? If so, please state your name and your address in the microphone right up here. If there are any participants on Zoom, please raise your hand. Are there any? All right. Okay. With no one else wishing to speak, the public comment period is now closed. Are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, just a question, Linda, I think you said there was, the total was 2.63 acres or something like that? I guess when I looked at, you know, Beth put me onto the actual map and it looked to me like there's a lot more property involved than that. There were like three different parcels in different places, or am I in the wrong? Am I doing the wrong thing?
Thank you for asking for that clarification. I probably should have clarified, 2.63 square miles. My apologies, you are correct, not acres, 2.63 square miles.
Thank you. And just one further question, Mr. Chair. The one thing I note is that we, part of the proposed annex area, if approved, would have a gravel pit. We don't currently have a gravel pit in the city, do we? Which will be an interesting zoning question, maybe, maybe not.
Correct, I am not aware of any gravel pits within the city limits. With the annexation part of it is any existing use, if established or under construction prior to the annexation, they would be grandfathered in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson here. On the Section 1 where it says, "All territory which may hereafter be annexed, the city shall be immediately designated as annexed transition zone, a holding zone until a city council annex a new zone for the annexed properties." And then it says, "No later than 30 days after the effective date." Is that going to be struck, the 30 days, or is that going to remain? And then if it does get struck, how long is the new timeframe?
Commissioner Anderson for that question. So the 30 days is being striked out. We're not setting a hard timeline, we're following what's in the transition plan. So I couldn't tell you, it depends on how much time it takes to do a comprehensive plan, how much public engagement. I think that would really gear and influence how long it would take. That would be the first step and then the next phase is then your commission, then based on the comprehensive plan adoption, amending the zoning district or the map itself. So it's really hard to tell, I mean, with any comprehensive plan, it'll probably take a couple of years and this is why it was important to provide a two-tier development in the interim because that would have been a very long time for people to kind of be in a holding state of, can I do this? And staff doesn't really have directions to point yes, no, because they're unzoned. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, and then it just creates another question as far as, is this, so the 30 days I think is extremely short and like you said, not realistic. But I'm just curious, should we put a date or a day in there, like 120 days or 360 days? Or just some kind of timeframe so it is getting pushed down the chain at some rate instead of just like nothing keeping it moving? You know, because I don't want something to get held up for two or three years and say, oh, we're still reviewing it, oh, we're still reviewing it. Nothing's driving factor for it.
I think the drive would be the pressure from city council to make things move forward because I don't think people would appreciate being in a holding zone. By putting a date, you kind of put more pressure on your commission and we keep amending or postponing. I don't think, it's just really hard to predict what a reasonable timeframe is, mostly a 2.63 square mile and we haven't done any analysis of the existing land use. That itself will take some time to develop and again, depending on the amount of public engagement, that can further postpone things. So I wouldn't recommend a timeline. I think we all recognize and I hope council would recognize the high priority of moving this along.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other commissioner comments, questions for staff?
I do have a question, do we currently have a plan to update the comprehensive plan? Does it expire in 2030? Or it will just continue to be the comprehensive plan until someone investigates updating it?
Thank you, Commissioner Smith-Wickelli. We do have a timeframe, yes. It ends, you know, the plan itself envisions up to 2030. Should we pass that? Is there any penalty? No. We do have in our capital improvement plan, I think 2027, designated to hire a consultant to help us update the comprehensive plan for the next 20 or 30 years.
No, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a question in reviewing the materials that were out there on the annexation. Assuming all of the, all the financials are really from four or five years ago, correct? In terms of what we anticipate the expenses to be, what do you anticipate the revenue to be? Is that accurate? We haven't, we haven't looked at that to see whether or not there are any changes in those parameters.
So I can answer that, Commissioner Murray, correct? Because the petition that we submitted was back in 2019, the fiscal impact was around that time. It has not been re-reviewed. I think the unique situation that taken us this long, we haven't looked at it again because that was what we're basing off of, is that 2019 approval from the local boundary commission.
I guess my concern is, or wonder, maybe it's for others, but I assume there will be the same opposition as there was before and it'll be a public discussion and I guess we will need to defend position that council has taken in terms of the annexation. And looking at some of those numbers, if I were just wanting to be difficult, I would use some. And in terms of what we intend to provide versus what we expect particularly through sales tax to collect, you know, and I just want, you know, playing the devil's advocate, have we done any, are we planning to do any sort of public awareness with the proposed annexation beyond what we've done in the past?
So those are all really good questions and probably best to be directed at the city manager or city council in further guidance, but in terms of for tonight, do you want to just focus on the zoning itself and the zoning code amendment?
All right, can we call for the vote?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelli?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Vodla?
Yes.
You have six yes votes and zero no votes. The motion passes.
Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Resolution PZ 2025-011, granting a conditional use permit for recreational lodge within the rural residential district at 1045 Roald Avenue. The following motion to amend is on the floor from the July 2, 2025 Commission Meeting. So provide a designated onsite fishing, fish cleaning station with frequent waste disposal. We postpone to allow staff to contact the applicant for more information. May I have an updated staff report?
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton. So, perfect, the slides are up. So as you've already noted, this, there's motions on the floor to amend what was read as well, so I'll give you an update as directed by your commission to follow up with the applicant to determine ultimately whether a fish cleaning station or fish cleaning would be allowed on the premise. The applicant itself has responded and they had informed staff that no fish cleaning would be allowed on their premise. In other words, it would be prohibited as part of this recreational lodge operation. So I just want to briefly go over the project as a refresher, maybe for anyone who just forgot a few details or those listening in. So ultimately, this is a conditional use permit and it's in a zone rural residential for recreational lodge, which may include individual cabins. It's subject to a conditional use permit because typically rural residential don't allow commercial operations. However, if approved and conditions can be mitigated, your commission can approve it, subject to meeting all the standards. With that being said, the proposal is a 12 cabin recreational lodge to be developed in two phases. First phase will consist of the six cabins and site improvement and second phase will consist of the remaining six cabins. And then as noted in their narrative, the placement and setbacks will be met, exceeding the required setbacks. This is on approximately 4.96 acre property. There are some managed streams on site, wetlands, and of course, they don't have sewer and water nearby. So therefore, for their development, they would need Department of Environmental Conservation permits for their septic and well and as well as because they're near the stream, they also need to get wetland permit protections as well. Not from us, not regulated by us, but I'm wanting to make sure if there's anything else. I don't have the site plan on premise, but ultimately, the last discussion that your commission had was concerning the fish cleaning station. So that has now been clarified by the applicant. So staff is recommending that, based on your last discussion at the July 2 meeting, there was discussion either we require it or we make it very explicit that it's prohibited. So as noted in your packet, staff is recommending that you amend the amendment that's on the floor, that it's just clear that fish cleaning on the premise prohibited and that their operation plan will be updated to state this prohibition. And furthermore, because of the postponement in the additional public hearing, staff is recommending further amendments that needs to be met so that we can update the resolution accordingly. And part of the noticing, as with all meetings, we did receive a public comment from the property owners at 145 South Boundary Street. It's, their comment letters are attached in the memo itself in the packet. As staff kind of relayed, I feel like most of the comments are really directed at the applicant and the details of whether there are fire pits, trails and so forth. It looks like the applicant's here to answer the questions this evening. So I'll defer that to the applicant. And then in regards to the protections of wetlands and water septic sewage, again, these are regulated by other agencies. And lastly, I just want to make clear when we talk about the owner's residency and how they reinvest, that is outside your purview, so that shouldn't be a condition of standards of review. Other than that, I'm here for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. The public comment period is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name and your address in the microphone.
Need to make sure the microphone is on.
How about that? Can you hear me now? My name's Bruce Skolnick, I live at 145 South Boundary Street and I'm accompanied by my wife, Tasha Skolnick, who lives at the same residence, and my neighbor, Mrs. Rolfe. I do have quite a bit of concerns about this project moving forward. Usually, I don't like to meddle in anyone else's business on their property as I don't really like anybody to meddle in my business. But there are some concerns. So since I am the closest neighbor towards the river, that separates us with a, and pardon my mispronunciation, of the Andronimus, Anduronimus? You got it. Well, that creek which runs through my property, through their property and then along the road on a South Boundary Street. So it encompasses the east side of their property, the south side of their property and I guess the western edge of my property. And there may even be more watershed or creek that goes down towards the Admanson Center. But anyways, so my concern is the people that are doing this project, who have bought this project, never approached me, never came and talked to me about it, never introduced themselves and they don't even know me or my wife. My wife was born and raised here, she's lived here many, many years. Our neighbor has been here many, many years and is involved in a lot of community activities and the property has been in our family for many, many years. The Honorable Judge William Sanders used to own the property, which is my wife's grandfather, who's deceased. So we're longtime residents. Now, having a facility behind our place with the potential of 12 units, to me, creates a lot of people that are going to be coming in and out. And no matter what the proposal is saying about the site being policed per se and their quiet times, unless somebody's there 24/7, that's not going to happen. And our concern is traffic, people wandering down, coming down to our property or by our road and listening to their, you know, it's a residential area, it's rural residence. And that's what the zoning is for that property, it's not for commercial use. Our concern's about the wildlife in the area, we have a lot of moose, there's a lot of bears and if there's more trash, we're concerned that we may have more bear activities. The other thing would be is the development of it by an out-of-state company or whoever they are, out-of-state owner, you know, they can write whatever they want to on this paper unless something's enforced and, you know, they can say whatever they're going to do, but if they don't do it, then, you know, we're the ones stuck, stuck holding the bag with extra pollution. I'm concerned about the creek we built in 2008. I'm concerned about the creek we built in 2018 there and we had concerns about the creek. In fact, I went over it with the city manager at the time and we made sure our setbacks were fine. You know, we don't want anything disturbed. We're concerned. As you guys know and have heard, East Readout's gotten really busy. In fact, I think there's, you guys are actually going to be putting a new road in to go out on the main highway. So we are already experiencing a lot more traffic on that road and some of it's quite dangerous. In fact, a guy passed me on the double yellow line in the corner yesterday, on the blind corner. So there are concerns for safety. There's kids in the area. You know, it's a nice little neighborhood. And another thing I wanted to address is that the neighbor stated that we have a large shop, which I do, I have a pretty decent shop. And we have lots of heavy equipment. I'd be more than happy to show them all my heavy equipment, which I think is a pickup truck and maybe a four-wheeler. So I wish they'd do their homework a little bit better on their neighbors and come be neighborly instead of like, we're going to come in and build this 12-unit complex and...
All right, thank you. If you have any comments, any further comments, if you could wrap them up at this point?
Do you want to add anything? Did I miss anything?
No, but I...
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you for your time and you do have a letter and it encompasses all of our concerns.
Okay.
Appreciate you taking it into concern.
Thank you. All right. State your name, address into the microphone.
I'm Kathleen Rolf and I live at 34966 South Boundary, right across the street from Bruce and Tasha. And it is a very quiet neighborhood. There's very little traffic. And I'm concerned, I agree with everything that is in Bruce's letter, Bruce and Tasha's letter. The property that is that you're talking about with the with the little teepees or the little huts. There are 12 of them and this is considered residential? This is considered residential. And usually, the common conditions and considerations for residential are single-family dwellings. And they're usually, single families are permitted. And usually, preserving open spaces have to be permitted. And most areas require minimum of 10,000 square feet. That would be almost two acres for one dwelling in a residential area. That's at least, that's what it is in Homer. And then occupations in a residential area are restricted. And they can't impact the surrounding area and they have to maintain that rural characteristic. This is a business and also I'm very concerned about the fact that they say that there will be somebody there to make sure that there is quiet time, but only up to a certain early evening. Not all the time. And you know, when people are camping and camping out, that they stay up. And if they have a campfire, they stay up around the campfire and there are lights. I'd like to have the night sky be just as clear as it is now. It's just a very nice neighborhood, very quiet. I go outside at night and can see the, when it's dark, I can see the night sky, I can see the stars. And this really worries me. I'd like the wetlands to be protected and I want to make sure that the animal habitats are protected. I mean, there's moose and all kinds of wild animals and birds. It's a wonderful area. And I think this this kind of could be a problem.
If you could
Wrap it up?
Include your comment. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, you said there wouldn't be, you have to have a, there's not going to be fish cleaning, but there is going to be trash. And it could be, you know, it's a wild area, so it could have bears around. So that wouldn't be good either. So these are my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
For listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I turn this off?
No, go ahead and leave it on. Thank you. Go and state your name and your address in the microphone.
Hi, my name's Laura Anderson. I live at 2863 South Blair Drive in Wasulla, Alaska, and I am the applicant. So I am from Wasulla, Alaska, born and raised. I spent all of my summers here on the Keene Island Peninsula with my family fishing. I am a school teacher, so I'm obviously not wealthy. So the 12 cabins was really a dream of mine because I want to spend my summers here, you know, on the river fishing, which is where I spent my day today, is on the river fishing. So it's more of a place for me to get away, so that's why it would be monitored because this is where I would be in my summer. And I don't want anything crazy. I'm, you know, born and raised Alaskan. I like, I want it to be quaint, upscale, nothing loud or atrocious or anything. And that's why I said absolutely no fish cleaning because that just has problems in it. And I understand about bears and trash, so I would be there. So I want to make that clear. And like I said, 12 is like, you ask for way more than you want, I guess, because you wouldn't want to be like, oh, this is going really well and then not be able to go more. So, you know, right now, I just want one. So... But I also was thinking, you know, when I'm teaching, it'd be a kind of a good place to bring in like traveling nurses who are always kind of looking for a place to stay. And I don't perceive traveling nurses to be a rowdy crowd, but so that's where I was thinking with the winter time when I will be in Wasulla area. And I think that's all I have to say. If you guys have any questions about my permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any attendees online? All right, with no one else wishing to speak, the public comment period is now closed. Are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
Commissioner Murray, Chair. So in the rural residential, are there any limitations for number of? Because typically, my my recollection is that with rural residential, you're pretty limited based on the fact you're septic and well-driven. And so I guess, you know, to the persons who have spoke, does this property meet the requirements to be able to have 12 units with 12, with perhaps a communal septic system and does that work? And then individual well water or joint well water? How does that work?
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, for that question through the chair. You know, in terms of regulating septic and well, I don't know the formula. Typically, you see on lots that require the minimum lot size is 40,000 in our code. And so the rural residential minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. If they were to build out during their due diligence or building permit process, we would require for them to do that due diligence to determine the number of cabins that they're doing. They have to get a DAC approval for those number of units before we give them their certificate of occupancy. So I don't know exactly what that looks like if they can do 12. We don't typically dive in that deep of a detail. We just wait until if this is approved in terms of use and this number, they can't build it out unless they meet all these other requirements. In this case, the wetland protection permit as well as the well and septic permit as well to accommodate the number of units that's been approved.
Thank you.
So from our last discussion, one of the big questions was, is there fish? Are the fish going to be cleaned on this site? And so I believe the applicant has already stated that there are no intentions for fish to be cleaned there. So we, at this point, would need an amendment in the resolution to reflect that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Murray, I would move to amend the resolution to indicate under findings that there will be no fish cleaning onsite based on the commission's determination.
Second.
Okay. Can we call on the vote for the amendment? To the amendment?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Vada?
Yes.
You have six yes votes and zero no votes. The amendment passes. Motion passes.
Through the chair, I set a question based on some of the residents' concerns that they brought up about noise and traffic mostly. Could you help me understand how some of those grievances would be addressed? I mean, I know that this commission wouldn't, but yeah, what would that process look like? Is it, is enforcement mostly up to the property owner or? Yeah, how would enforcement work for some of the concerns that the residents brought up?
Thank you, Commissioner Vada, for that question and I can answer to that. As proposed in the resolution, I think, let's see. Under their original resolution, number one, is the operation of the recreational lodge would adhere to the hours operation lighting plan and nuisance mitigation plan as identified in attachment one of their operation plan. So first level of enforcement is really on the applicant to enforce. And obviously, if we can't complain that they're not mitigating, then we'll give them a notice of violation. And of course, if they continue to not mitigate and address the notice of violation, then staff can bring it back to your commission to revoke their CUP. That is the process of enforcement. And if you recall, in the operation plan, they do have quiet hours in there as well. So that's something that staff can hold them and adhere them to. If we're getting complaints that, hey, people are being loud beyond these quiet hours, that's kind of the standard I'm going to be enforcing because it's written in the operation plan.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. We also need another motion in the resolution. So to amend the third whereas of resolution PZ 2025 to read, whereas the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a duly advertised public hearings on July 2, 2025 and August 6, 2025, following noticing requirements outlined in SMC 17, period 10, period 425.
I would move the adjustment to the resolution to include the language the chair just noted.
Second.
Call for the vote to amend the resolution?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Vada?
Yes.
You have six yes votes and zero no. The motion passes.
All right. Then we have one more that we need, a motion to amend, a commissioner to motion to amend the fourth whereas to the previous resolution to read as follow. Whereas at its July 2, 2025 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission postponed the motion to amend the resolution to the August 6 meeting with direction for staff to gather information from the applicant specifically regarding whether fish cleaning will be permitted on the premises as part of the lodging operation.
Through the chair, Commissioner Murray, I would move to amend the resolution in the, whereas, was that third whereas? Fourth whereas to include the changes to the, given the postponement, as you stated.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote to amend the resolution?
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Vada?
Yes.
You have six yes votes and zero no. The motion passes.
Okay. So are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
I think we, through the chair, this is Commissioner Vada. We discussed briefly last meeting that about sort of the density question, the density concern. And I believe that this parcel is fairly large, 4.6 acres or something. And I was just wondering if, you know, if it was owned by a different person. This in the rural residential district, multifamily is allowed, is correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Vada, for that question. So in the rural residential, only single-family and two-family, in other words, a duplex are allowed. As a by right use, multifamily is not allowed. So we want to talk about the breakdown of density. You know, as mentioned before, a minimum lot size in the rural residential is 40,000. That equates to, you know, this is almost five acres. You can subdivide into five. Worst-case scenario, each lot has a duplex. And under our current code, they could operate a short-term rental on each of these lots by right in a residential zone as long as they get a short-term rental permit, which only really only provides guidelines on how you operate, make sure you have parking and that you're not pulling nuisance to your neighbor. Otherwise, it's an administrative permit anyways. So we're talking in terms of density. They can have up to 10 if they subdivide five lots. You know, I know that someone provided a a 10,000 square feet. If we talk about that on a five-acre lot, they can actually have 21 units. Ours is a little bit more restrictive. Ultimately, if we're leaving it to a by right permitted use, you can see 10 units on a five-lot subdivision for this parcel that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelli, Chair. Do we have a limit on duplexes? How many bedrooms a duplex can have per side?
Thank you, Commissioners Smith-Wickelli. No, we don't. They can build as long, like, they can, as long as they meet the setbacks, which on a, you know, a 40-acre lot is a lot. Setbacks are usually not a concern. Building height is not a concern. And parking is two parking spaces for a dwelling unit, so they just need to provide four parking spaces. That's ultimately the only development standards for a duplex in the zone.
Looking at the map, I was noticing, is it all rural residential on between Keystone and the river where all the other lodges are? Because I looked up a number of the lodges and a lot of them have four to six cabins stating that they sleep six to eight. guests. So it feels consistent with the area, if I'm right about that rural residential area.
Thank you again for that question. You're correct. Everything within that side of town, honestly, east of Sterling, all the way running down Reedout, is rural residential. Yes, we have several lodges that have multiple individual cabins without bedroom restrictions. So in terms of this lodge, probably not close along the river, but it is within the same zone. And those other lodges went through the same process as well because it's not a by righted use for a lodge, a recreational lodge in the R R zone.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioner comments or questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Call for the vote to adopt the resolution as amended?
Commissioner Murray?
No.
Commissioner Smith McCallay?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Commissioner Vada? Commissioner Vada? Commissioner Vada, are you there?
Yes, sorry. I was on mute.
Okay, and your vote? Commissioner Vada, what was your vote?
Sorry. Yes.
Right, you have four yes votes and two no. The motion passes.
For the record, we need the commissioners who voted no to give their reasons as to which standards were not met.
To, point of clarification.
Provider.
Passed. So is, what's the precedent for us stating our reasons for voting no since the motion passed?
I agree.
Yes, I, the motion did pass, but just for future reference, if you vote no, you can just provide your reasoning because we didn't know where the vote would have gone. Just a reminder.
No comment.
No comment.
Okay. And we're going to move on to new business. There is no new business, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public comments without prior notice. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those, are there any? Okay. All right, now we're going to move on to informational items. There are no, no informational items, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is reports. And if we could, we have councillor, council member Whackler here. If you would like to make some report?
Sure. We'll be covered on the last, just pull up the agenda to remind myself. It was so long ago. What we covered at the last meeting. We did, let's see ordinance. So we did accept the ordinance regarding quasi-judicial appeal procedures. That was a change for us. We also amended this a lot in municipal code, reimbursable expenses, which kind of came with the negotiating with police department and reasonable expenses, reimbursement for employees on travel. Increasing estimated revenue appropriation by 5,000 in the general, general fund. That goes to your question earlier today. The $5,000 was appropriated for funds due to that election. It's going to include a unbiased, neutral information, postcard and Johnny, if she wants to speak to any other information on what that would include, if you guys needed additional information for the annexation vote. We want to make sure the city is not taking a position either way. We are, just would like to let all the voters know exactly what, how it would affect them and also access to vote. We want everyone who is going to be affected by this annexation to have a chance to know how, when, and where to vote on it and, and be included in that. So if anybody has any other questions, let me know. But that's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for council member Whackler?
Mr. Chair, I assume it's going to be in the general municipal election. Is that correct? Or is it a special election?
It is in the general election, but one thing that is very different from other elections is that people who have, are residents of the area of annexation will be allowed to vote in our municipal election on this subject. Sorry. And are registered to vote. Thank you very specifically, which you still have time to register to vote. We still have a few weeks left on that. So I do request if anyone is affected by this area to make sure they are registered to vote. One item that is a little bit different with this is property owners who are not residents do, are not, are not included in that, if that makes sense. People who are not a resident of that area are not included in that vote.
Thank you. All right, the city manager report, I don't think the city manager is here. So we'll move on to the director of E D M P, Director Mitchell?
Thank you, Chair Burton. I'll keep it short. You know, I had, at the last meeting, I said I would bring back in the A D U code amendment. You know, things got, had to pivot with the amendment that you saw tonight. And also looking at it in depth, there's a lot more refinement at the next meeting, and hopefully everyone can make it. It's going to be a heavy agenda because honestly, it'll probably be my last meeting before my maternity leave. So I'm trying to pack it all in. Probably, we're looking at three tax amendment. We have a C U P, and I think we have a plat. So please just be prepared for that. Otherwise, we're just trekking along, still going through the motion of just making sure that I am preparing Beth to succeed while I'm gone. But again, I'm only going to be on maternity leave, like, absolutely silenced, probably just the first month and a half. And then after that, I'm still going to be working part-time for the remainder of my maternity leave. So I'll still be available to your commission as well. Other than that, that's all I have and happy to answer any questions your commission have for me.
Are there any questions or comments for Director Mitchell? All right, we're going to move on to the commission comments. We'll start with Commissioner Turner and just go down.
No comment.
I just had a question about the explanation of the no vote. I know that we went through this before and we're trying to do it a little bit differently, but if I were to vote no, am I supposed to state it at that point? No, because such and such, not, not be asked later? Okay.
Correct. And I will read from code itself. Within the C U P section, "Members of Planning and Zoning Commission who voted to deny or no on the permit shall state the reasons for the denial on the record citing relevant code standards that are unmet." The reason for this is, this can still be appealed and the other party can use your justification as the rationale why they're appealing. And that is why it's important to provide your reason and the relevant codes.
No comment.
Just a question of clarification for Beth. Isn't, isn't it standard practice to rotate who votes first, second, third, fourth, and beyond? You, you, you went, you went the same direction with the same lineup.
That was my mistake. I was not aware of that. I'll change that next time.
Okay.
Okay.
We request grace.
Yeah, I'm still learning.
Commissioner Anderson, one question for, maybe to bring to city council. Just kind of in general with the roundabouts around town, I just, I never see any police presence or any guidance or anything. And it just seems like, I just literally almost witnessed another accident the other day because people don't know that they need to yield to the left or that they need to use their turn signals. Or it's like they don't, they're just, everybody's just guessing that someone's going to stop or not going to stop. And it's just like they're flipping a coin going through. And if we could just, I don't know, if there's some way we could have police presence or start pulling people over who blow through at 45 mile an hour, like they have the right of way and no one else does. I don't know. I just wanted to put on the record, and I feel like it's something that we should address in our city, especially now that the busy time is over for next year, to address it, especially before the busy season starts. But just in summer in general, I just feel like people don't know what they're doing going through roundabout, and there's going to be an accident if there hasn't already been numerous ones. But I don't know. As a citizen, I, I see it every day.
Hi, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner, sorry, Anderson. We, I hear your comments, and I absolutely am a resident in Salatna as well. And so I have seen some absolute ridiculous actions taken at roundabouts. I hear your request for a police presence. I'm always a little bit concerned. I don't want to use police officers in a way that will be, community safety officers is definitely how I would want to pose it. I wonder if we certainly could propose an informational campaign in some effective way to get people to understand, but not use punitive ways. But obviously, the ultimate punitive way is someone getting in an accident. And there has been more than one accident in those. I know on one of the major ones, there was an accident, gosh, at least a year ago. That's definitely a question I can talk to the police chief and see what his thoughts are on that, on what we can do, or whether he thinks that a presence would be useful. And I will get back to you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. I think informative campaign would be awesome. And, and all I mean by police presence would be not necessarily that there's a guy standing there or a car parked there. But more or less, if I blow through a stop sign in town, I expect to get pulled over. If I go through the roundabout at 45, I've never seen anyone pulled over. That's all I mean. Like, if they see it or someone doesn't use their turn signal and you just turn down a side road, I'm pretty sure you can get pulled over for that. The same thing in the roundabout is like, you should be using your turn signal so people know that you're going to be turning in front of them. That's all I meant by presence is just if they could maybe elevate that traffic laws do apply within the roundabout as well. It's not just a free-for-all because you're into some different area of town that's called roundabout land. So that's all. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Vada?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Just because it's a circle doesn't mean you don't have to use your turn signal. I, I had a question for staff. And, and an apology, I suppose. I didn't mean for that awkward silence to last so long, but that was a difficult decision. And I, I suppose I wish I would have brought forward to the rest of the commission to discuss whether or not we wanted to restrict the, that development to 10 units, perhaps, to have it be more consistent with what would have been allowed. But, but as you stated, Linda, there, there could have been many more units perceivably on, on that acreage. But most of the other lodges are, are smaller, you know, you know, six units or five units or seven, eight units. And I, I guess the, the question is, often residents' concerns are when we have conditional use permits like this, where it's something a little bit different than the, the character of the neighborhood, but still sort of fits. What, what, if I would have voted no, what could the reasons have been that would have been justifiable? That's where I was really struggling because I think that that development meets code. But the, the concerns from the residents were also very valid, and it was a tough call. And I think we'll have many more of those types of decisions before us. And just looking for a little bit of, a few of your thoughts or guidance for future decisions.
So I can provide an example. I mean, ultimately, it is within your commission's purview to lower the proposal of, of the number of units. And your reason could have been, you know, if someone was to build by right is 10. Or you can just say the surrounding lots are larger, meaning as a one lot, one lot, they're only allowed one principal building. In this case, the adjacent neighbor to the south, as long as they don't subdivide. Ultimately, they're just going to have that one principal building, and maybe they make it into a duplex, but that's the maximum capacity. So maybe say at this time, based on the existing use that's been around for the last 20 years, we just don't find that 12 units is appropriate, 10 is. And maybe you come back in the next couple of years and amend your C U P to add additional upon determines that you're running a clean operation, a respectful operation as well. That would be an example of the standard is the intent of low density and the argument of what's reasonable. It's just how you rationalize it on the record.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I wish that sometimes our discussions could go longer. And obviously, sometimes we all wish that they could go shorter, but it's, I mean, I know we've all been thinking about this one for, for a month, so. But I guess in, in hindsight, I wish that we, that I would have thought of something like what you just said. And, but I, ultimately, I voted yes because it sounds like this, this person has been here and is going to develop this project very slowly. So I'm, I'm hoping that, I just want to put it on the record to state that I hope that they, that they do act neighborly and, you know, develop this slowly so that it can, you know, be in line with, with the, the surrounding area and, and the other folks who've been there for a long time.
Understood, and I appreciate that comment. Again, I'm, I'm here as staff. At any point in time, your commission has any, you know, concerns on how to navigate standards. I am here to help you make the findings, to address what standard you find and kind of fit where it's appropriate. Also, you know, I'll put this on my radar that, let's see how phase one goes. And, you know, obviously, if they have multiple enforcement, that's something that can bring back during phase one. It's like, you know, it's not working out so well with six. How can we accommodate 12? Let's go ahead at your discretion as commission to reduce that at a later time based on complaints and stuff if they're not addressing it. That's also a possibility as well.
Thanks. Yeah, it's good to know. No further comment. Thanks so much for, sorry, thanks for, for chairing the meeting, Commissioner Burton.
You're welcome. So the next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 3, 2025, at 5:30 P M. Seeing no other items on the agenda, the meeting is adjourned.